Talked to Andy Williams and she turned it in on June 9th to the Park and Personnel Department.
Yeah, I looked it up. That was the one request was because of the number of people they're expecting somewhere between three and 500. Coming here, but as far as power and everything, I'll work with them. I'm good. We don't have anything else in the park on that date, so.
And then the rain date would be the next weekend. I don't know if you need to know that, September 25th.
That would be a heat question.
That I cannot answer right now.
Okay, that's fine.
But I would assume that we have one in September.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was messing around with the camera up there. Did we get a special name for the place?
Yes, it was turned in in early June.
Do you have portlets and all that?
Yes, we will.
I'm taking a motion to approve the request for September.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, 2022, but not the following weekend.
I make a motion to approve the special request for Fortville Christian United Landmark Park on September 22, 2022.
All favor?
Aye.
Those guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Hillary Robinson, 222 West Ohio Street requests for our council to approve to allow chickens and honeybees on her property. Hillary, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, Hillary Robinson, and I own a bit 222 West Ohio. We recently purchased a property from my grandmother, Janine Adams, and she and my grandfather built the house back in 1972. So it's a sentimental property for us. My husband and I got married there, so we have a sizable barn and have plenty of space. I do have a notification for my neighbors, all of them that I sent that to. I did hear from one of them and her concern was that she sprays for mosquitoes. And so she said, I'm afraid that might hurt honeybee. And I appreciate that and knowing that information. So that's the only neighbor that I heard from. Anybody else that I talked to in person, it's fine with it.
Okay. Did you turn that question in?
Yeah.
What's your rate for that?
4.23. Yeah, our house sits way back off of the road and our barn even farther. And we back up to Hampton Field at the park, the very, I guess, first diamond. Yeah, lots of space. And I've had chickens before. I used to live off of 1,000 in Fortville. We sold that house in early June. Honeybee will be something new, but I wanted to see if I could get approval before I went down the road and make it not a hobby because I know that that is something that I like to get serious about. If I can't have the approval, then I don't want to.
Okay. Is there any concerns about the honeybees? I know we approved the last leave with the variants on our chickens because she had over an acre lot also.
Oh, we never had that. We're lifestyle. A lot of bees, I don't have their.
We approved honeybees and hemorrhage.
Yeah. Is there a limit on how many?
Never heard any complaints from them about their condition.
I think they were four hives.
Do you know how many hives you have?
I only need one.
I don't think you're about massive feet, but honeybee farm.
No, 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 no. I just want, like, it's all for personal use, so just honey and.
I can't get a motion to approve. Although first, is there any public comment? Can I get a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the request to allow chickens and honeybees on the property at 222 West Ohio State.
And that variance is good for a year. Then you gotta keep having, or two years.
I don't recall. It's per town code, not per county.
Okay. Well, we'll look that up. If there is, just, that's just to keep you a neighbor and their way happening. Okay, can I get a second? All favor?
Aye.
Of those, guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a copy of that or a jar?
No, I have a copy.
Lori May, next up, Burnet Township Trustee to present the 2023 Burnet Township Fire Territory Budget. Hello, I'm Florence May, and I just want to start by saying, you may be aware, news article, our fire chief, Chad Abel, has stepped down. And we are very pleased to announce that Mark Abel is stepping up from deputy chief to be our interim fire chief. What we're going to talk about tonight, two items, the budget, and we all know that we have an interlocal in place with the town of Fortville and the town of McHornsville. And by interlocal, we go through this process each year, just so everybody knows this. And as we present the budget, the budget is sent to the towns after it has been accepted by the Fire Territory Board, which it was at our last meeting on Wednesday last week, and they voted to forward it to the towns for review. So some of the things I'm going to say are the things that Robert Holland would have said as your representative to the Fire Territory Board. You have the budget sitting in front of you. And I'm actually going to have Mark walk through the, I should say, chief elder walk through the main elements of the budget, and then this is your opportunity to really discuss it, if you have questions. And then we will ask you to vote to refer it to the township for final vote. Did I miss anything? Okay, chief?
Good evening. My name is Mark Elder, interim fire chief, Burnet Township. So we started this process out with Piper Wider giving us our target goal, the budget goal for 2023. And that number was $4,055,984. What we did matters, we knew that we needed a budget, a cost of our inflation cost increase for supplies and contractual services. We budgeted a seven and a half percent increase in those categories. With that being left over, we used it applied it to personnel services. Obviously, that's the major portion of probably any government's budget. With that, if this budget is approved, we will be hiring nine additional career personnel, which will allow us to fully staff the two engines and the medic with career personnel. We will still utilize part-time personnel to fill in voids, gaps, vacation times, injuries, things like that. This budget will also allow us to increase our part-time pay rate from what it is currently at $14 an hour into $18 an hour for firefighter and paramedic to $18 an hour for firefighter and paramedic, and $20 an hour for a paramedic. We will also raise our pension base to be comparable with departments around us like Buck Creek, close to Magic, who may still be just a bit under, but it's much closer. And then we had a cost for insurance increase based on a recommendation by our agent of 10% cost increase. So that breakdown of the budget that you have before you, category, total dollar figures for each category, again, 79.14% goes to personnel costs. The 6.11 to supplies, EMS supplies, fire suppressors, supplies, contractual services, legal fees, things like that, maintenance on equipment, bringing an outside vendor, is 13% of the budget that we have, 1.76 set aside for capital projects. Are there any questions that I can answer? It is balanced budget. We're not over, not under, but that's a good thing.
How'd you do the gas?
Well, that's a good question. Honestly, last year, we kind of saw this coming. I don't think we saw it to this extreme. But based on prior year usage and what we thought it could go up to, we are under budget right now on fuel. If it keeps going up, it may not be, and I love that where it's at for fuel costs based on where current usage is for the last two months. And if need be, we'll take it from one appropriation number to the other, just have to make cuts where you need to. I will say for fuel costs, our personnel have done a pretty good job of being self-aware. You know, we don't have our own fuel depot, so we use the Gas Buddy app. Our, all of our officers have it, and they've been directed every morning to check where the cheapest diesel fuel is and regular gas is at. And they go there. Now, if it's a penny difference or something, they may not travel, but most time it is, and they will, those cost efficient. They limited their trips out, trainings. Obviously, we have to do training. We've just got through doing an extensive driver's training. We brought on, but even with that, we were still in a monthly budget for fuel. So our people are being very, very conservative along that.
Any question? Any public questions? I can get a motion to approve that.
Thank you.
Do you want to add the way?
No, it's the station next.
I make a motion to approve the 2023 budget for the Burnet Township.
All favor?
Aye.
I propose. Guys have it. Thank you. Alrighty, can I get a motion to break for a public hearing so the council could conduct a public hearing to consider resolution number 2022-6?
Oh, with this one?
Oh, you're coming. Oh, sorry. Formated to address the council for turning the bid packages for the Fortville Fire Station Construction as well as the option of moving forward.
So a second item on the agenda is the change of scope of work for the Fortville Fire Station. And the reason that we were meeting that before the Fortville Town Council is because it is part of your levy that is helping to pay for that. We want to make sure that there's full transparency. Back a few months ago, you approved a scope of work for us to build the station. Because of inflation, that scope of work has changed. I don't think that's probably a surprise to anybody. So what you have in front of you is a summary, a construction summary and a bond summary. And I just want to point out some of the key points in this and talk through some of the changes in the scope of work. And then we have representatives from the architecture firm Dell and representatives Garmon Construction to help answer any questions. So as you look on the construction summary, you'll see that the original approved scope of work was for 6.6 million. The actual bid package came back at about 7.2 million. That package include three bays. The revised station scope, which we're going to talk through in a few minutes, after we went back and made changes and said, we will not go over the bond, we will not go into the fire budget, we will not reduce the number of firefighters and paramedics we have. That's just the bottom line. So can we do it within the existing bond scope? That is what drove the reduction of the scope of work, and you're going to hear that we are down to two bays rather than three. None of us like it. Nobody likes it, but everybody likes it a whole lot more than working out of mobile home over at the McHornsville Volunteer Station and the challenges we have with that particular property. There are a number of other items. I want to emphasize that, well, the bay is the easy one to explain. The changes in the facade, changing brick color so that it's less expensive, getting rid of the monument sign, those basic items, those are the easy things to explain. This team put together a booklet on the value engineering side and walked through each and every component with us, oh my gosh, over a several week period. Burnet Township Fire Department leadership was heavily engaged and led that process. And everybody has come back and said, we are pleased with this approach. It is the best of the scenarios. So as you look under the bond summary, you'll note that what we did was we had pulled out $1 million that we were holding for the soft costs because we have to pay for everything that goes within that station to make it operational that isn't engaged on the construction and the architecture side. I will not go through the long laundry list of those items, but this also included property purchase. It also included bond council. It also, oh my gosh, so many injuries. Alex, oh my God, I went into the wrong field. So many injuries. And so the different pieces that had, that got us to this, to this point. I'm just kidding. The, so as we walk through these pieces, as we went through the prices on what's called FFNE or all the soft costs on that end, we do believe that we can accomplish this within our total budget by shifting money from the soft cost side into the construction budget. So that's the short story of the financial analysis. We are, would be happy to go through the bigger picture of it, but what I'd like to do is have Jameson and Tony come up and just talk a little bit about the changes of what you'll see in the station. And just, this is your opportunity. If you have questions, if you have concerns, we want to know.
Did Robert already go through all this?
Robert and I have gone through it, but Robert was not at the meeting, so we did go through it independently. And he did not voice any concerns on it. He wanted, his big emphasis was, is the Burnet Township Fire Department happy with it? And we'll have Mark speak to that at the very end after Garmon and Dell.
Gentlemen, my name is Tony Anderson of Garmon Construction Services, Jameson Hills with Dell, Dell Design. Just coming to you tonight to address some of the changes that you see before you. The largest impact that you see immediately is the reduction of the, one of the bays going from three down to two bays. Outside of that, there are a laundry list of items that, that allowed us to keep within the bond and in effort to remain fiscally responsible on the bond side with the, with the township. You want to talk about anything architectural?
Sure, I'll keep it brief. I don't have it all on the screen, but there's a couple copies floating around. You'll see that the biggest changes, obviously, we talked about the loss of that grass bay. We didn't site the building the same so that in the future it could be a potential to add on that grass bay and so much higher cost, that's future dollars. And just to keep the station decided as a third station bay. Other things we took off were mostly cosmetic. Some of them were canopies and things. We all liked to go to roller blinds to control the sun from inside. So there were a couple cosmetic type canopies on that bay to the west. Outside of that, it's a lot of just changing our masonry, being more cost-effective, change some of the detailing, simplify steel structures. And then just take a close look at like the MTC systems to handle that. Make sure that there were opportunities to do that as soon as possible. Those bays are deep enough that they hold two vehicles on each side. As correct me, Mark can talk to that, but it depends on the vehicle, possibly put in the. Like the EMS.
Just the bay are too deep, and like James said, it will depend on the type of vehicle. If we end up putting in a ladder truck there, obviously probably not unless we have like a smaller command staff vehicle. But what this design will allow us to do is it allows, today, it will allow for future growths. Who knows, we will need a ladder truck in the very near future, whether that's going to be better positioned at Fortville Station, Fortville Station. I don't know. We'll need to do an in-depth study on that. I think it's a better opportunity that we're going to need a medic in that area, transporting ambulance. This station design will allow us that, and it will still have two bay spaces open behind that for future growths. That will work, and it gives us a station on both sides for road tracks, which is so important.
Does it still have the same amount of living space? It's all that part the same, it's just the other end that's changing?
Yeah, just that end state. It'll still be a 10-man station because if we do put, end up with a ladder truck and engine and a medic truck there, if they are fully staffed with every seat filled, that would be 10 feet. It's going to take us a while to get to that point. So what we are planning on doing is just finishing, had to save some money to apply to the construction, is that we're probably only going to finish out five or six of the bunk rooms, living spaces, and leave it as a big white open box space so that when we decide and we determine the growth of data, we could add that on.
Thank you. Do you have any public comment? We need to make a motion on that.
It's really just for input and to make sure that if there were any major concerns. And then we should, we should note that the township on Wednesday did approve the GMP so that we couldn't move forward on the, couldn't move forward on the project. But as you're thinking about this also, if at any point you want to give me a call and discuss what I've done, and you will be invited to the groundbreaking, which hopefully we're talking about this.
Alrighty, can I get a motion to break a public hearing, council to conduct a public hearing to consider resolution number 2022-6? A, B, C. Okay. Fertory Resolution Regarding Engagement of an Economic Reviolation Area for a Tax Abatement for an Exchange of Thursday Tools.
Adam said. It's the, good evening, director of Adam Zachlekowski, the planning and building director for the town. This item before you involves the tax payment proposal from Thursday Tools, or a real real estate property business equipment property tax rebate, tax abatement, I should say. What we had to do was expand the geographic boundaries of the district in order to make that happen. So it's called an economic revaluation area. There was, first thing that you did this meeting is what they call the declaratory resolution, and this is all based on state law enforcement. And then the final component would be to approve this declaratory resolution. You do have to have a public hearing on it. It was advertised in the Greensville Reporter as required. Bill is here and his attorney Steve Hart from Bakery Trinker is on the Zoom. So if you have any questions, any of us, and of course Alex is very familiar with the process, he will answer those questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question? Do we have any public comment?
So we just go back to the regular meeting and close the public hearing, back to the regular meeting?
Out of the regular, close the public meeting and go back to the council. Second, I second. All favor?
Aye.
Of those, you guys have it. Thank you. Now we go to the council to consider holding first reading of ordinance number 2022-6B regarding the voluntary annexation of 9168 North 200 West. Before we get there, we want to, are we going to have a reading of the term?
Yes. So we, we need to have a vote on that confirmatory resolution before we jump to the annexation.
Okay.
I make a motion to Fertory Resolution of Town Fortville, Indiana for the enlargement of an economic revaluation area and bringing in application for real personal property tax bait.
All favor?
Aye.
Guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, right?
Yes.
Council takes the, the council to consider holding first reading of ordinance number 2022-6B?
This will be 6C.
Regarding a voluntary annexation of 9168 North 200 West.
All right, for this particular item, as I mentioned, it's a, it's a residential property, a rural residential property on the west side of 200 West. It's owned by the Crites, and they currently have septic, and I believe well watered, but most importantly, they like to have town sewer. So in order to do that, that's why it's the annex, they have a lower rate on an ongoing basis. So they came to us with a voluntary annexation request. It's the contiguous requirements under Indiana law. So as you know, with these annexations, they have to go through a state mandated process, so this is simply a first reading. We would bring it back in another meeting or two for a public hearing, and then we'd come back for a third time for the fiscal plan and adoption of my ordinance. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those, and then this, the Crites is here as well. Thank you.
So that's a row of ranch homes that are on 200 West, and we're just going to cut out a little square, like a little sliver out that annexes that little bit in.
Correct. It's one, it's just one property, one ranch. But it's near a number of ranch homes.
Yeah.
And yes, you know, to that point, certainly it's always advantageous to the town to try to, try to annex more, but we obviously don't want to do that on a voluntary basis. So when we have these situations come in. Fortunately, the downside is it does create a bit of a patchwork pattern of town limits, but you know, they had the S O P over timing to be all the incorporated. So what is, they got something or something.
I will say it's pretty complex because they've got a few of those towns. Because they request to come.
Yeah, especially further, further south than there on the same side of the street.
And what is, what is the cost of that, somebody annexing this?
There's a fee.
The only, the only cost would be if there ends up being an increase in property taxes because they're going from unincorporated to incorporated. But even with that, there's a possibility that if the property owner has already added their tax caps, they may not see any more money. But what, to that point really quickly, what we always recommend is for any annexation that the property owner can contact the Indian County Waterers Office and make a run of quick estimate on what, with those property tax rates being in town.
No, I was thinking, maybe you should mark it that we'll annex it for free.
Yeah?
So this is just a first reading, so it's a regular one.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2022-6C regarding a voluntary annexation of 9168 North 200 West.
All favor?
Aye.
Of those, you guys have it. Thank you. Okay, councils, you consider holding first reading of ordinance number 22-6D.
See how quick I get, John?
Regarding rezoning of Ridge West, P U D, 600 North, Main Street. Public hearing scheduled for the Planning Commission on Tuesday, June 28th at 6:30.
All right, so for this particular item, this is simply an introductory reading, really to gather any input that the council may have of the proposed project. And so with this. And so what this proposed project is, it is just west of the Bridgeview Apartments. There is a developer Kent Ritter that is looking to purchase the property from Web Spinner, it's about a four acre property. And we're looking to do two multi-family building, one on each side of Main Street. Once we go through the property, connect Timber Ridge to the rest of town. The developers represented here, the, the main opportunity for the public to comment will be at the planning commission meeting. Coming up on Tuesday, June twenty eighth, here at the community center at six thirty. Certainly. Developer staff would like to know if there are any questions or concerns from council at this point, so that it can be. Frankly, hold it into the west of this.
Going to be two apartment buildings?
Yes.
Do you know how many apartments per building?
Forty. If they would be market rates.
And this is the same. The apartments now?
Yes, there was Mr. Ritter, V F L C is the new owner of the. Bridgeview Apartments, and we asked them renovating those. So that's how it gets the same request. But it would have a little bit more, definitely more of an urban feel to it. The idea is for the two buildings to come right up to the edge of the right way, Main Street has to cross through.
We have some pictures. They have hard copies, it's a, it's a.
I'm Kent Ritter, Adam, thanks for the introduction. Owner of Bridgeview, new owner of Bridgeview, purchased it back in October. And so, yeah, so really this is, I wanted to talk about some of the work that new on Bridgeview. Now I wanted to talk a little bit about this expansion project. So we purchased Bridgeview in October, we invested and are currently investing about five hundred thousand in improvements on property. Renovating all of the unit interiors, excuse me, all the unit interiors and some exterior improvements. Tree trimming, adding some common spaces for folks, and just general improvements, we're, we're doing the parking lot here in them soon. Just general improvements on the property, so just to continue on with that investment, I mean, we've just had. Serious demand at the property. Outside of Bridgeview, I own nine of the properties. Seven hundred units, all around Indiana, Ohio. And so as we, we saw the opportunity to purchase land directly adjacent to the property. Four eight lot, we thought it would be a good opportunity to, to expand Bridgeview, which would allow us to do a couple things. I mean, one, I think provide really high quality housing in the area, that's the intent. The renderings and drawings, you can see them from there, and it's to really build it to, to new city standards and a really high quality. Right, and bring a really, a high quality resident up in town. But also it allows us to bring a management office onsite to Bridgeview, currently we're managing it from a bar. So allows us to manage a property together, have a more efficient space, have management onsite. Where I, folks are there, and also I think a big piece of it that was been discussed in the town is running Main Street. Main Street dead ends at that, at that land currently, so the idea of part of this project be complete Main Street, which is part of completing the town's kind of comprehensive. Street plan and, you know, allow that to grow there and then create, I think, what'll be, you know, eighty apartments of index of one bed, two beds and three beds. Attract, you know, great families, but also, you know, just eighty quality residents to the town. So that's kind of overall, I know Russell's gonna expand a little bit on some more technical details of the, of the expansion.
Did you say two and three bed rooms?
One, two and three bedrooms would be, yeah. Market rate, yeah, it, it'll mostly be two bed, two baths. It'll be about sixty percent two bed, two baths, it'll be then about twenty percent three beds.
So I'm assisting with the development team, want to talk to just a couple of technical details, and we do have render rates here. There's folks in the audience who are looking interested in that. As Kent mentioned, this is a P U D request, and we are working through that process without. Some, some of the details, we will have parking onsite, parking approximately one and a half spaces per unit. For the apartments are eighty inch, have more than a hundred and twenty onsite parking spaces. We utilize the building setback line of fifty feet to try to provide some space to those existing residential developments. Existing residential uses to the north and to the south, so to try to give some buffer of existing residential uses. You'll also notice in those renderings, you have two stories elevations at the end, on the north end and south end of each building. The goal there is to try to have an appropriate. In built development where you have single story, sorry, and have two story development around, when you have three story. To try and provide that appropriate transition for those existing houses, so you don't immediately walk into a three story, two story development. We do have architectural requirements included in the P U D, so you have materials that are required, including, you have basement, much of it is free from the wrap up. For each unit will have its own balcony or patio, so you can try to provide materials for attractive living spaces. But also to try to provide visual breaks as you go north and south of Main Street, so it does not just look like a giant wall. We did center, the site plan doesn't include centering these buildings on the properties here, not immediately adjacent to any residential use. It does provide for interconnectivity between the existing Bridgeview, so that will provide for opportunities for parking, shared parking. And also provide opportunities for those who might be exiting up to the east to utilize that existing road. There, but as Kent mentioned, the completion of, of Main Street through the property, we think is, is that it's a whole. Access points up north and south through the town, without adding any access points built to the west, so we'll be driving through traffic, people ahead of us to the west. So this is a two, we view this as a two step process, the first step is zoning. Process, which is the planning commission next week, and then without a renovation, we'll transition hopefully to come back to. The second component will be the development gap. As you all are aware, putting market rate development into a period, sometimes provide some challenges, financial challenges. We are working through the final design based on the site plan for you. Final, kind of get final construction members to determine exactly the size of that gap and how, and we're going to tell the staff about some opportunities, how to fill that gap. Want to make sure you were aware, we might, we will likely be back here for you, for the development commission, working through how to address that gap. So that was one of the things we wanted to make sure you were aware of, we thought through, we worked through this process. As Kent mentioned, these will be market rate, if you think about rents, like a dollar quarter to a dollar seventy-five a square foot. Very much a market, you know, a special market. And we mentioned the calls that you have seen this as increases of twenty percent, ten to twenty percent in, in. Internal qualifications and renovations that have happened, have already happened. Bits of the existing units, you know, those confidence. So bringing those, those existing units up to the standard. So this will be, we believe, a great opportunity for inbuilt developers, market rate though. Provide travel opportunities to attract and retain those, whatever community that I've been working, staying in the industry. Get people here, people who are ones that. Happy to answer your questions, otherwise we will work towards a process with.
Any questions?
For next week's planning commission, is there a letter going out, because it seems like maybe there was some. Understanding of the, the date tonight.
Yeah, so, so we'll follow and sort on that, that we were attempting to hold a neighborhood meeting this evening, we listed a name, but forgot. But it has a public notice, and it does have public notice of the planning permission meeting for next week. So that, that public notice requirement is that that, we were doing an additional meeting. That's why we have cookies, and we, we really thought we were gonna have folks show up, so we're gonna leave those.
Any public comment? Thank you, making a motion to. Regarding the rezon.
I make a motion to, to the rezon for the Ridgeview West P U D six hundred north Main Street.
Take a second.
Ordinance number twenty, twenty-two, six D.
All the favor, aye, opposed, you guys have it, thank you. All right, is here from M B A H, I don't see. So we'll just skip that one. He's gonna talk to the tip, right, I mean, R B C on this. All right, we're moving on to old business. Counsel to consider holding a second reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-two, six A regarding sidewalk cafe regulations. Chief, you were here last week, we're in, no, sorry, okay, did you read over the ordinance?
I did, I went over it, but Andy called out the state excise, to make sure it was in line there and everything seems in order, when I say yes. So I don't have any, as long as we meet the ADA act. This ability to get to the sidewalks, I don't have any issues with any of the registration made on that.
Any questions?
Brad and I also talked about enforcement and how that would work typically for. Right, anything in the public right of way, it's usually the police department, and anything on private property would come through. But cited that we're gonna keep, keep that part of the ordinance silent, we're not gonna say who's gonna enforce it, so. What we will do is it'll, it'll go through planning office, planning code enforcement, and if in the events in the future. If it becomes more a police department issue, we can always change it. I would be able to enforce it.
I have a question about, not just the cafe asset, but the signs that are. Sidewalk or signs, whatever, they're put out in the middle of the sidewalk. Should that be included in this for all stores? Or is that a different kind of?
Well, that's a good question. I believe, yes, that's what I was just thinking, is that I believe that is covered in our sign ordinance. In terms of sidewalk signage, I can give you that language in the ordinance to see how we currently regulate it. I don't know if different communities handle that. Sometimes it's part of this general, getting a general sign permit, some places do it as a separate permit.
I don't care if they're putting them out, I just, they're putting it literally in the middle of the sidewalk, and if you're talking about walking. I haven't yet.
The point is well taken, and that we would have the same concerns about ADA, around some obstacles, yeah. So let me, let me send that language to the council, so we can all be, I got a fresh plan that right too, I don't know what it says. If they. If they require permits and want to go down that route, we could maybe send a letter to both side gate. Standing waiting on that, it'll all take care of that, so it says.
To approve ordinance two thousand twenty-two, six A, creating a sidewalk cafe regulations.
All the favor, aye, opposed, you guys have it, thank you. Okay, old business, Bob Farrell to address the council concerning property four ten East Broadway, come on up, okay. We, Bob Farrell, local business owner. Gonna make this as quick and as easy as I possibly can, if possibly it can be made. To me, the only thing that appeared to be left was is the question as to whether or not. The property that I have, have. One time, I ingress egress to it and was my application so structured to include an ingress egress? And then the question falls, the, the answer falls to the question, if you agree that there was an ingress egress. At the time that the town took it out and put a type one curb in, which allows four inches. It's four and a half, that, that's not bad for. But anyway, if I may. Here is a quick packet, you can open a packet on the, on the open end, it, it follows the continuity of the. It follows the continuity that, that it was anticipated from the very beginning. That very first one with the, with the green outline ink, outlining ink for the graph and so forth. If you'll notice that the bottom, far bottom right, it was acknowledged by Adam on four fifteen. Of seventeen, and he put, he put it right there in his hand, I believe, twenty-eight foot entrance. Of seventeen, and he put, he put it right there in his hand, I believe, twenty-eight foot entrance, okay. That's the very first one, and honestly, the rest of them, uh, go through, the very next one merely shows the same thing, that's my. That's my plot plan application, uh, on the original, uh, with accounting, the third page, uh, down there. It's called, at the bottom of it, it's called page two of four, and then, but you see where that said that? The highlight on that one says that staff had determined that the Broadway design standards do not apply in this case. So that, that's the four ten property, we could go through all the, the cags of getting there, the next one is the enhanced version. That has, and that was in the last application itself, and it's in color, it shows in, highlighted in yellow. Existing vehicular in out, in fact, it has two of them, if you look towards, uh, you're, the left at that point, you'll see when it says existing. Vehicular in out, and, uh, Joe and I came to an early understanding, uh, that that would best be eliminated. The fact that, that, uh, he pointed out that was just way too close to the highway itself. And so I, I said, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, but I'm good with that, so it was, it was taken out at that point. Now, the last, the last image there that you have, if you'll see, it's got, it's got two, two images of the same property there. It's the very last page on your first, uh, item there, if you look very closely on the, uh, the right hand. Image, you'll see it, if I may, you'll see it highlighted in yellow, and what you're actually looking at. Is you're looking at a cut exactly where I've been referring it to, it's just, it's just real small in yellow, okay? It's just this right in through here, and this is the drawing for the hydraulic engineer company. That I hired to do the study, uh, as to where the water was gonna go and how we were gonna handle it. Joe emphasized that there's absolutely, I mean, that's not a bunch of water that comes off, especially once I've got paid. And so, anyway, this is, this is their rendering, uh, as to what exactly is there at that time. And they clearly show, and this is a blow up of the very same thing, and you see right here in this area here. That is the ingress egress, I have listed every elevation that they give. Like nine point eight two, and this is six point eight four, well, quick math, so that's three inches. It's three inches off of a four inch high curb is what was anticipated and what was actually there. And this is from the architectural firm and the hydrologist. Right there, about, about where it is now, or where it might be right now. The original.
Yeah, but isn't that your responsibility to put that curve in, because it was my responsibility to put mine in? Because you had to put in that, that valley, that wasn't there off the sidewalks to make ADA, right?
Right, you would have had to have done that.
Yeah, I had to.
Because there was one there, I appreciate that.
You still would have had to do the same round though, because you wouldn't. I'd not, it would, it would not have been ADA.
It would have been ADA, if you'll look, if you'll look, I mean, you'd like, you're gonna take a wheelchair in there? You could, I suppose, it looks like a vehicle.
Here's what I would look at, if I was looking at this, I would say, this would be, if, if my engineering firm drew this up. I would be expected to put this in, not the town.
It was, it was there for, that's what I'm trying to say, this drawing shows the elevations, exactly the elevation. These are not projections, these are actual elevation, these are there. And, 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 you know, I, I don't know how else to, I don't know how else to say it, uh, it's existing. So that's what we started with, and I lost it to a four and a half inch high curb. This, this was what was, if you read it.
The problem with, with your slip, okay, okay, this is all four inch, okay? All this is four inch, this is all four. I, I wouldn't expect the town to be slipping this down and, and doing all this work.
They did it one, at one time, it was there, when I bought the property, it was there, it was sought out, I have the pictures of it. It was taken out and there was a four and a half inch curb put in, it might have intended to be a four, but it turned out to be a four and a half. This is what I had, this is what was anticipated, that, that those dimensions, those heights would have been maintained. Okay, I, I had them, and, and for one, for one reason or another, they're, they're gone, they were taken out by the town.
And that's what the county approved, right, on your drawing?
Exactly, that establishes, that establishes the day. The, the question is, do you believe that, that I had a regular entry, ingress egress? But was this basically, it didn't even have a quarter inch ride off, it was a continuous very, very low, uh, ride. Now I have four and a half, if you agree with those two facts, then you have the decision to say, okay, the town did it, the town caused that to happen. Is the town going to go ahead and reinstall a proper entry there? At your expense, that's the question, that's all it is, A, do you believe that I had it and that, that my plan anticipated it? And then B, are you?
I would, if I was a building owner doing a parking lot, I would expect, I would expect to put that in myself, look, that's all. It was, it was, and you're tackling, it was removed, it was taken out, it was there.
Yeah, yeah, Tony has, Tony has got, see it right there, see it when it began, Fred, it, it was like.
Smooth.
It was just like glass. The busted up part doesn't matter.
I know, but you can't tell really what it is in that picture, it looks to me like it's still a roll, rollback curb. It's not a flanged out curb, it's a rollback curb is what it looks like.
It's not.
Always put back in if it meets town standards for access to the garage or put in anywhere. What you're asking for is depress curb, which is not typical, if you wanted to depress curb, most people will request those that they're trying to put in. Like a tonneau or where you put in a wheelchair ramp or something where that four inches too much on road curb. So what you're asking for is depress curb.
Is that what I had?
That road was put in, those curbs were put in right after I started here, so I'm gonna say it roughly. Eighty-nine, ninety, and those curbs were put in and repressed because we already knew the driveways were in order to keep water channeling that you exist in driveways. I mean, your curb was all tore out, it was all busted, it was put back in according to the town standard, especially today's standard. Your driveway approach was not entered at the time, so we weren't meeting up to anything, so you had the opportunity to then put your driveway anywhere you wanted to be there, and it wasn't restricted to that exterior area.
I didn't get an opportunity.
Absolutely.
No, I didn't, you, you took it out, you didn't call me, I got an email, no, it was a very surprise to me. I, I took pictures of it as it was taking place, and, uh, the point I'm making is, is that, no, I didn't have an opportunity, no, I would have most definitely said. Please give me what I have.
You're asking.
A depress curb.
But you got the opportunity, but you had the opportunity, you still have the opportunity to put that approach in anywhere along through there at the base standard with the town standard on the driveway.
I, I wouldn't have, I didn't do anything to it, it was fine with me, it got taken out. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to express that any better.
It got taken out because of the drainage issues, that's how this all.
It drained, it drained fine, and.
I have, I have a huge picture of water.
You had one that asked about water standing, right?
The drain took care of all that, the drain has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
But that's how this got tore out, was when the drain was put in.
The point is, that's fine, it could be put back in, what I'm saying is, there was plenty, plenty of room south that I had. From the drain south, okay, there were plenty of room for a, actually for a twenty foot entry, I wouldn't have to done a thing, I already had it. Y'all make the decision. I put them all in fair faith. More than that, I can't say.
I can say the same.
I, I had it, I'd like to have that, I'm asking you to do that.
There's, if it was something that wasn't useful, then I'd be all for it, well, if I didn't think it'd use that the way it needs to be used, I would be right there with you, I'm just not there, sorry. You gotta get a nice, I mean, you, you put that approach there, how about the curb was that, right?
I put the what, please?
The approach.
Uh, well, the approach was put in, it was taken out, and the curb put in, that's what curb cut means, that's, that, that's the, the actual definition of a curb cut.
You poured the concrete and put it right up to the curb, right?
Pardon me?
You poured concrete and made sure.
I had no option.
I'm just, I'm just asking, that is what you did, you put it where you wanted to put it, you could have put it anywhere, anywhere along.
It's where it should be.
Okay, or where you wanted it, that's where you want it.
It's, it's not, it's not fashioned properly, the, the, the geometrics of it are all wrong. It is a, it is a, a concrete pad up against a four and a half inch curb, I had a curb cut, and that's what I'm asking you for, I don't think I'm asking too much.
Joe, what would it cost to go just cut that curb out from that area?
What Bob's really asking for, he's not asking for an approach, he's asking for a depressed curb. The actual approach, the curb is a curb, he's asking.
That area, right, he's not asking to change the whole curb.
Well, the approach, yeah.
Well, what I'd tell you from the county dwellings, that the county approved it with that inputs to be there, so it is there, it is there.
Yeah, it, it is there, but here's the thing, I, I had, but I had my part of it in, I had Jason come in and, and do the right. I didn't ask the town to pay for it. Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I just, you're asking me to ask the taxpayers to, to pay for that.
But if you change that curb, you're gonna have to tear all that concrete out for your.
Probably, you're probably right, because of the slop and all, the grade alone, most of it, yeah, or.
I, I did, Becky, I just can't ask.
Is there any way you can make? Put something in front of that curb to slow it up to the curb? They have curb ramps, they have curb ramps that you can buy and.
Well, that's the gutter, that's a gutter, that's what.
Does that want to be on the yard? Where the water runs, that's how it runs through the road, is the curb.
It is, is the low portion of any curb, that's how it goes to the drain again, yeah, you don't wanna move that water out into the street or anything like that. It's just fine where it is, and the drain is working wonderful.
Do, do I have a motion that anybody wants to, uh, put forth this? But you want to.
I think motion would be given, uh, depressed or whatever curb it is in that area.
Do I have a second? Okay, if, I, I, sorry, thank you. Okay, our next business department heads, Joe, go ahead.
Well, that's another contractor, his, or easier rather, has put the paving bids, the advertisements together, they plan on advertising that July first and July eighth. And we've got those bids, or the bid packet for Congress to review, hoping to open bids on the fifteenth. If it did, supplement to approve the contract.
It is, very obvious, how's this gonna get stuff?
If we, if we let the bid, I expect them to get it done this year, we probably. That's our real pay, that's that community crossings funding, we got those almost $10,000, plus our contribution, $33,000.
So it's the Broadway pocket?
No, yeah, this is a list of projects that I handed out to the council, that are crowned to me, in fact, that includes, uh, Ohio from Broadway out to the county line. To the town limits, right there. High Street, Park Street. High Street, School Street, there's a bunch of segments of the.
This has nothing to do with the alley, so we're doing, that's.
No, that's gonna be done separately, I reckon, once I get to, I won't try to beat that. Okay. The other thing, I think I always had, brought it up at the last meeting, I was the president, is the water rates. The state had reduced the utilities rate of, to the tax.
Utility receipts tax, they abolished it.
They abolished it, so we had to change our rates for our water base rates, and you did get those numbers gathered with the ordinance, all that's down.
The average real problem.
Does the taxpayer get them, uh, so they just don't pay that tax, it's just not there, we're not collecting any extra money.
No, and in fact, it's going to be a reduction in the rates, and because the law requires. Utility to implement this change, to remove the utility receipts tax from the rate structure. So technically, we should go through a formal rate change, but most municipalities and municipal utilities are not doing that. The reason is a couple fold, one, like we mentioned, the legislature passed this law saying, yeah, get rid of that. So we have to do it, right, and this ordinance, this before you are first reading, simply states that we're implementing the requirements that were in House Rule Act. One thousand two, which is now public law, one thirty-eight, uh, which takes effect July one. The other is, even if someone were to complain that their water rates went down, we need to go through a formal I U R C long drawn out process. The remedy would be to put the rates back to where they were, so they could pay the higher rates until we go through them, so it's kind of pretty unlikely. So then, it's the more reasonable approach is to do this, to just adopt the ordinance, uh, to remove the utility receipts tax from the town's schedule rate, water rates. Buzz has created the schedule, it's attached to this exhibit A, and so that would be the new rates, and then, again, first to your question, no, the town's not collecting more, the, actually, the rates will go down.
Let me ask you another question.
We're not voting on this, this isn't on the agenda.
It wasn't, we just need to be prepared, so. We were, we got the schedule after Andy. But, yeah, so we were hoping to have first reading. Yeah, just to move things that along, I, if you prefer not to, so it's on the agenda, we can put it on the agenda, and then we can suspend the rules and have two readings at the next meeting, that's, that's.
This was discussed in the last meeting, right? So we do it, it's not a big deal.
All right, okay, I'm just making sure you guys are comfortable, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do a first reading on something.
Prior to implementing this on our building system, a key software company that have to have this word adopted, this thing that F W L or software.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-two six A. So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-six E. And the ordinance implementing the requirements of House and Road Act one thousand two to remove the utility receipts tax from the town's schedule of rates and charges for the fourth building municipal water utility.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed. I have it. Thank you. And to be clear that the-
Where there's-
You have to do two readings.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixty, maybe sixty.
And we can't, we suspend the rules of our being off.
Yeah, no, it's unanimous of the council presence, so.
So that'd be outside of what, finalizing the-
Okay, that's up to you. So then we're gonna suspend.
Yeah, you have to need a motion to suspend the rules and have a second reading tonight. And that takes a unanimous vote or O to have the second reading. And if that passes, then you can open up the question on second.
The rules.
The rules.
Done the rules.
The rules have second reading.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All, uh, aye, opposed. The ayes have it. Okay, now, let's, now.
Means it's effective today, right?
We need some more vote on the second, yeah. Make a motion.
Okay. So we can say motion, right? Okay, I make a motion. Uh, to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-two six E. Implementing the requirements of the House and Road Act one thousand two to remove the utility receipt tax from the town's schedule of rates and charges for the fourth building municipal water utility.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Approved.
Thank you.
And to be clear, that doesn't take the sales tax off. That's just the-
It's just that one specific tax, the kind of receipts tax, whatever that is, the legislature did with.
Easy. How much that works, yeah?
On an average, minimum residential thirty-six.
They were also visiting the last meeting, if you recall, we talked about, so we noticed one, two billing cycles on the billing statement, same with this table as well. So everyone will know about it. Again, it drops a little bit. And that's part of what each time program is there to put in all that stuff.
The next thing I've got is, as you'll remember on the town hall project we were working on, I had sent this out a little earlier to you, we just got kind of like notice on this one as well, but the, the solar panels are originally ten thousand dollars. But we're having to do additional area, we try to find the building, how they hold it up, come and find out our building, we're not holding those panels. And we have to give a preview. With some additional panels, uh, the price gone up an official twenty thousand dollars. Did make the panels large enough so the economics still worked out the same. There was some favor. Good process, works, we should celebrate good process today. And that's one split additional forty thousand. And if I could, we do have, have additional twenty thousand each year off of these aside point.
We don't really have a choice, do we?
You could scratch the solar panels if you wanted.
So we scratched the solar panels, would they give us thirty thousand additional length? Cause we don't, we don't, we did a test. Cause you had that, we got seven, twenty thousand somewhere, so.
This will reduce the heating and-
Yeah, the, the utility bills for the lighting and that part of the, I mean, it's mainly, it was, uh, it was first engineered for the lighting portion of the building, and then some of the other. This would also sell back to the total.
When they got projects, let's be down, Joe.
They're telling us that they're hoping we'll be in the last second of the month.
Right?
I'm excited.
They are.
Yeah, solar panels there, I'll be installed at that point.
So if we spend the extra twenty thousand, the payoff's still the same amount to link the time. Or is there, they're installing larger, sort of? Uh, I don't know. What do you, what do you guys want to do?
Is that twenty thousand all that we have in the G M? Probably it's gonna be a world-based savings on, I think it was saving.
That was you guys.
Yeah.
I think the other thing is, I mean, it's, what kind of message you're trying to send to the businesses or bringing account, trying to encourage more.
Yeah. We got them.
You're good with it. I mean, that's why I went out. All right, well, can I get a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to spend the additional twenty thousand dollars for the solar panels for the town municipal building.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Just to let you know, we're new hire, our new disposition, screen for the apartment, have time to a better position.
What's the difference?
Yeah, Sean, Sean, Sean.
Well, that's the market now.
It is. Hey, the losing, uh, you're gonna do job for us.
I don't know, they do more jobs.
So we're advertising kind of heavy. We're, we're trying to get something done there. Um, to let you know, to have got one, uh, security employee that is out, that I'll pay. We've got some medical issues, probably not. So probably got another position there. So please be patient with us for, for limited, uh-
It's, it's gonna help though, what Andy gave at the newsletter, I think.
I think it is, yeah.
People know and maybe they'll deal with spring for that.
We raised the price out there and we took some of that there. And, and what we just noticed, some of the areas, they were starting to pay for that position. It's a little bit more tempting, but I was really surprised at that now Friday, kind of come in this morning. So I've not seen that person resume from that. We'll see. Hopefully, hopefully something will come out of it. Um, town hall, we should be in our September one. Uh, Keith, you're gonna report on the park stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let that go there. Um, that's pretty much on line, yeah.
Tim Ritchie's paid too. Is it on the list anywhere? I've been through there a couple times.
Yeah, it's on the list. We have a, uh, it's, there's a paper rating that we give, where it is, it goes through a payment management system, it goes on the rate of those, like, the condition, the cracks, how far they are and everything. Um, it's a little bit further than a lot, some of the building, and that now are a little more shady. I know some of the buildings, that's a bad one, so I know you got, uh, a lot of, as new as it is, it's got, you know, burned down, there's a little crack. You beg to tell. Delaware, part of Delaware Street is paved years back. And if you don't remember, that's when they built it down. It started to work on thirteen. And that was what they called the unofficial beach where it was down there. So after the road was completed, thirteen opened back up, they went back and looked at Delaware City, they had more damage on it, or, and if, so they were coming. That's, that's on, there's some soul for it. Yeah, we, uh, we kind of did some grants and we're probably down. Maybe it was pretty necessary.
Oh, I've had some questions about the trail, or not the high school. Can you update me on the, the timeframe of it all correctly?
Uh, what school, we're gonna work the school right now, the trail going, uh, they're putting in landscaping, creating, grain soils, they've got the white faces for them. Setting everything, the panels for the crossarms for the flash and lights they're going at. Uh, this show will come back later, sort this code, and that portion will be done. As you know, where the, uh, my burn of motor salvation is, that's been completed through their entire property. The section of the trail from Garden Street down to Two West, on Port of Pike, is slated, it's gonna about to be this year, probably happening in the spring. That's gonna include the terminals of, uh, Maple Street and Broadway. It's gonna be Broadway corridor. It's gonna be, uh, the trail going from Garden down to Two West and traffic quiet at Two West. So that's all supposed to be happening, probably this next spring. The segment between Two West and where the subdivision is stopped up there now, due to the fact that the Maceur project got postponed a couple of times because of the road, which you have set, those funds that were available, they didn't let go, cover the outage. And I think around the town, it's starting to near this opportunity for us on twenty, twenty, twenty.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty, is that right?
Unless a subdivision comes in, then it'll, they also, uh, one like the other.
Yeah. So, um, the school had like summer school programs and kids needed to go for whatever. And they didn't have transportation. Those really come up, but kids aren't able to even get out to the school this summer and are missing opportunities for education. Um, because that trail isn't there. People offered bicycles to them, but the parents aren't, don't want to ride on that road and, um-
Well, we saw the need coming years ago, it's really on the trails.
Yeah.
We didn't have one of them.
Is that sound correct to you?
Well, I would say it's like twenty forty-nine.
Yeah, right. Hopefully we're in the all.
No, it's a reading, yes. So I, I believe it's just great. I, I thought it may one time, it was twenty-six, but in my mind, it's still too far down the road.
Well, hopefully we'll be developer coming here and starting.
I think I sold that, right?
Yeah. Uh, one other thing that I do want to mention is, right now, it's starting to be hot and dry, and our water treatment plant, you know, as you know, we're rebuilding, we're building a new plant. For some of the processes that are going on, uh, and sprinkling, the folks are doing, especially in the town, the town area, it's really taking a toll on our, perhaps. Becky mentioned to me earlier about the water quality. You might hear people talking about it's not as good as it was. In order to keep up, they produce some of the softening, to try to fill those water holes that they're pumping out. We're really trying to encourage folks to, uh, limit their irrigation, stagger, if you've got irrigation schedule, and we can, you know, do follow that. It, uh, it would really help us a lot. Uh, I know we went out this morning and there were, probably going at forty yards, they go to the schedule, you're not supposed to bring it all in. Stagger, we side of the street and, uh, we've got our red side.
The problem I see with that is, that's the, it's a, it's a, we count, right, the week supply water, the problem is, they're not attached to the sewer bill, so they, they, they can just water. When it, it doesn't affect them at all. It affects us more.
Yeah, they, it's been sent out. And it's been put on Facebook. I think on comments that there was on Facebook, or a couple people have laughing, most, you know.
Yeah, it's-
No way to enforce that.
Uh, we could probably start writing citation that you-
But none of the people are named on the calendar.
I'll, I'll look into that, but we, I'm sure we're like, hey. Well, it's actually the-
Might be a lot of help to the bill.
Oh, yeah.
It's working, it's silent, it's cited on the bill.
Yeah. Okay, so we, and you did, you made your point. The folks in down there, sewer bill is, depending on how much water consumption they use. So I think they're more conservative. But if you're not paying their sewer bills, depending on how much water you use, the water will be pretty expensive.
That's right. That's still what's sure that we had there. Okay. Uh, Adam, you have any questions?
No, I'll give you a question.
Question.
Yeah.
It was nothing on the, uh, facade.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So for the, uh, for the facade repair program, part of the stellar funding from O'Grady State. The VFW project is underway. Uh, they're currently removing the nonhistoric limestone from the front of the building. Of course, they've got scaffolding up. And we meet with the contractor every other week, uh, just to see what the progress is. And they had just discovered a historic detail on the first floor of the building, which is pretty neat. And so they were working with the architect to figure out how to preserve that detail incorporated into the project, cause it was behind the old, the wall. So he asked me, so do you have any concerns about anything? I said, well, is it gonna cost me more money or what? He says, no, no, no. I said, okay, then, no, it's fine. And that's moving, uh, well. Unfortunately, Fox Garden is a little bit delayed right now because the contractor's waiting to get, um, a delivery date on those weekends. And he's still getting a delivery date. I think it's because of all the supply chain issue, whatever, but, uh, I think they're gonna start pinpointing and repainting the building. Later to get that portion of John up. So hopefully they'll be mobilizing on that job for sure. Um, but I think the game plan is still to have everything wrapped up, a move project by fall of this year. Okay, so I'm just excited that finally real construction progress, so this happened. Forever, but they're late to memory, so. Thank you.
Danny?
We're, I'm only got a couple things, and I, I am seeking approval, looking back through the first ones involving Summer Fest. We've all had conversations about it. We've had the egg forever, but looking back through the minutes, we never actually formally approved alcohol at the park for that bit. So I just want to get it on record for approval, obviously through, um, the council, twenty-one and over area, obviously we're all same stuff, ask good with it. Um, but I wanted to ask for you guys to make a motion for that.
Yeah, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve alcohol at Raymore Park for the-
It is designated here.
Designated.
All in favor? Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Second thing I have is just approval for day, more details to come, Winter Fest, uh, Saturday, July, or July. December third, um, twelve to seven, the same as what it's always been for Saturday. So I'm just a little, for cool, from the council as far as giving that date set in stone for interviews. Whatever it is, Saturday, December third, twelve to seven. More details to come as far as everything that's involved.
I get a motion to-
Make a motion to approve the date of Saturday, December third. Two thousand twenty-two for the Winter Fest, and so it's, uh, details to follow.
All in favor? Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Last thing I've got is, um, Joe knows this, but I don't want to concern anybody, but just you guys are aware, I leave town tomorrow and on loan the rest of this weekend next. So obviously, if anybody happens to have any other concerns, please direct them. So get in touch with Natalie or Ray, be around here. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, uh, here, Patrick. I'm gonna pull up the rear, uh, here tonight, but I've got a few things. Staff hiring update. To date, uh, we've got seven applicants. Not great numbers, but, uh, we are getting interest with, uh, advertising Iowa A's website, our Facebook. Uh, I know a lot of people share that the town started on bears and everybody. So, uh, a lot of inquiries, which is normal for us, you know, what's the P T standards? How, what's your process like? What's this? What's that? And then the last week, we get flooded with applications because cops probably aren't the most timely people in the world. Uh, I have put out one conditional offer to a in-county officer, um, who had spoken to me about transferring over from another agency in county. He is to go to Perth next Wednesday, so we'll see how all that goes. That's usually about a month-long process. It's an open spot, so we'll see how that goes. I also have two other certified officers, one through Kentucky, one through Indiana, that we have started backgrounds on. So we'll see how those turn out too. But that's where I'm at on my staffing update.
But that's where I'm at on my staffing update. I do have one person out right now. And then everybody else seems to be healthy and in good spirits that I know of. So hopefully we can backfill some of those positions that have been open throughout the year and help us out because having one officer on our. Murder scene was not a great, great thing for us to have. So I met with Jack Parker about the referendum. And I have agreed to allow him to have an SRO. From the town, they pay two thirds of the salary, but it's just like they do with our clients. So that leaves me four thirds of salary and benefits open under my. Basically salary benefits package. School has agreed to purchase one car for our fleet. We are going to purchase the car. It's going to be the town of Fort Worth's car. But it will be assigned to an SRO out at the school. So I got them to pony up a little extra money for a big equipment cost for us. Which was great because we have to start. Transfer our fleet around again. Working on twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen models. I do this twenty twenties. Geo bond money that was spent for twenty, twenty one, it was all spent in twenty. So we need cars for the rotation, like trying to get it rotated every five years. Every two cars every five years, which is a good rotation for us because it's feasible in the budget. But unfortunately, some of that money got spent before I got a little bit, so. I might have play a little catch up. We are having meetings back here pretty soon, and I think Joe and all the department that we got missing this week about it. So we'll see where that goes and how we play that out. I do have a request from. Saint Thomas, they have their festival every year. They have been, I've been here. And they asked me from Mark Dudley. He's a member of Saint Thomas Parish. They hold their festival every Saturday, first Saturday of August. We've asked for a build that allows us to block off Garden Street next to church during the festival. It's eleven AM until nine PM. It will be on August sixth this year. I told him I don't have a problem with it as long as barricades are up, if it's properly, you know, addressed, we'll put it out probably the night before, the day or something like that. As long as you all didn't have a problem with that. He says if he needs to come for a meeting, he'd be more than happy to, but he wanted to get it cleared through me at the bottom of the street first. So that's, that's up to you. If you'd like to make a motion to allow that, or if you'd like for him to come in, I can relay the message. I don't think we even need a motion. We made that, that decision up to you a while back, didn't we?
Yeah, I think last year, I think the year before, there's a couple of.
It's your discretion. Okay.
Kind of for example.
Yeah, all right, then we can do that, as long as everybody, everybody has.
First one.
Public or. Anybody has any issues with it, but it's been going on for years. It's always a very well run event. It's always very organized, they keep parking out of the streets and. They do their part to make sure that people get across the street safely. So I'm okay with that. Last but not least, I have Officer Chapel here. I have a letter accommodation for Officer Chapel. So come on up, Levi. Levi's newer. He's here for less than one year. His anniversary dates September seventh. But. I'll just read this to you. Officer Chapel's been with the department for less than a year, has proven to be a great asset to the department. His duties on May fifteen, twenty twenty two, Officer Chapel encountered an individual with an outstanding work and affected the arrest. The next day I received an email from the party arrested. Usually that's not a good thing for us. But he wanted to thank Officer Chapel for his professionalism and respect given to him during the encounter. Therefore, I want to thank Officer Chapel for doing what is right, knowing what's looking, and keeping him to highest standards of the law enforcement community. His attitude and his professionalism are what the town of Fort Worth will come to expect, as well as our police department. This letter accommodation will go in his personnel file, along with a copy of the original email of the other party involved, and will remain in his personnel file from the time he's employed for both police departments. And then I will read the email. Came out arrested at Fortville. I'm like, oh, great, that's not a good thing on a Saturday morning at five forty seven AM, but. I was arrested in Fortville Thursday evening for a warrant at the Hux Gas Station. I cannot remember the officer's name who took me, but I wish I did because he did his job. But he showed me respect and it made all the difference. I haven't always had good experiences with the Fortville Police, but the way the officer treated me made the difference. And he is definitely the type of officer who would people need. I think he deserved to be recognized if you could find out who it was. And he told me the arrest date, time, and then the state. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Letter accommodation is gonna go in your file. And that's gonna be the right thing. You know, always looking forward to it. Yes, sir, you may. Of course, it's kind of weird that someone would send a letter in regards to an arrest that you made on. And the letter being praised, it's not really something we look for in this profession. We don't do that, like, like you said in this letter. We do it when no one's looking. But right now it's two thousand twenty two and there are a lot of people looking. So I think it's just important. For my, myself, it's my personal mission, I think as well as our team, that we treat each other and the community. With a partial and, and respect, just as it says in our, our mission statement. So that's super important for us right now to bridge the gap between the community and the public. Hopefully, we can continue to do that through the people in our community. I think that's just gonna be very important moving forward. Like I said, my personal, personal mission and send this for our whole team. I couldn't, maybe you just say something. And then my last thing I have here is my St. John's email about ordinance, the state ordinance out of the schools. Alex and I have kind of briefed back before, we're gonna do a little more research into it, but I wanted to bring it up to kind of get your minds thinking about this. Our officers encounter hundreds of these during the school year. If we're right, everyone to take it, take these court all the time, it's gonna cost the kid quite a bit of money, hundred thirty five dollars, what the state or. Class C ordinance is in Hancock County, but depends on the judge, it could go up to five hundred. So we're gonna do a little research on it, Alex, do a little research on it, and then I'm gonna get with NASA, neighborhood to get substance abuse in Hancock County. Tim Rutherford's the director of that. So I'm gonna see if he might have any initiatives or anything else, because we have the Kentucky Tobacco Free Coalition and all that.
Is that really a police department's responsibility? I mean, it's, what are they waiting? It's smoking cigarettes. It seems like police should be used. Well. I think where it comes from is that right now there is a state law that's a fraction, chief, that is. So it's, it is a. It's an enforcement issue that if the school seeks to enforce that, have the PD write tickets or. Go to the prosecutor and be enforced. The issue is, we don't wanna, we wanna see if there is a way to provide enforcement. To soon deter the kids from bringing their vape, doing vapes at all, but at least having it to school.
Right.
Whether they're loaded with marijuana or. Thick tea. But do that in a way that doesn't have our officers spending, you know, however many hours every single week. Over in Greenfield, you know, responding to the tickets they write.
We were interested once before about the park where people wanted the police department to enforce them smoking in the park. It's like. If we, if anybody can enforce this, this ordinance, right, they can hire somebody if they want. But they don't need our police. It is a, it's under Indiana code. Actually, for vaping under twenty one. The problem we run into at the schools is most of the kids, it's about half and half. It's either tobacco or it's weed. So they're putting the weed in their vapes, and now it's a criminal offense instead of just an infraction. And we have to test every one of those through our mobile tech, testing things. So I'm open to discussion. I just want to kind of bring it up, get everyone's thoughts, get with Alex on it, and, and try to find a way that we can stop. The vaping at school, stop our officers, you know, if we can have some sort of teeth in it to where we can say, look, we're going to give you this ticket. Or we're gonna send you to a tobacco sensation class through NASA or something. To where the kids aren't going to do this at school. Don't free up the SROs at the school. Don't free up school resource officers time, A. B, you know, free up any time that they would end up in court for having a vape at school, unless it's a vape with THC or CBD in it, and then. Or CBD still, for kids, it's still illegal. So it's a criminal offense at that point. So we have to determine whether it's going to be a criminal offense or just an infraction. And we have to do that for every vape we encounter, which takes a lot of time, money, and effort for the officers out there to do that. They spend about half their time dealing with vapes.
Adam, do you want to talk to your head? What kind of those test case costs?
About five dollars a piece, about forty bucks, forty, fifty bucks for a box of tin. That was last year's price that I got. I don't know if they've gone up. I have a purchase since last year. The school pays for half the cost of those. So they have, we have a race with the school, because we use them out on the street also. To determine if it's CBD or THC. So because some people could say, you know, because they both smell the same, they both look the same. But they say, oh, is that CBD? Well, we have a test kit that'll tell whether it's a point three or below, or a point three or above. So we can determine whether it is a criminal offense or actually non-criminal offense.
Kids can't buy the vape anyway, right? You have to be eighteen. I know, I know. I'm just, what's the law say? That's what I'm trying to say.
Twenty one. Twenty one, twenty one is the law currently. Unfortunately, it was the law at eighteen when I started smoking a long time ago. When I was not eighteen, I would walk in and buy cigarettes. So. They've really put some teeth into the purchasing of vapes and purchasing of tobacco for retailers. But not really on the user end of it. It's just a ticket or it's just whatever. So I'm just trying to open up some discussion. I don't really want to, you know, have them write a thousand tickets. Remember that we, we said, well, you want to enforce it.
Park, parks is different because that's just, that's the town property, it's public space, it's not tied to state law and you can't smoke within certain distance of public buildings. It's, it's an open area, and so if the, the town wants to have an ordinance to say no smoking in parks, that's an ordinance. PD can write the tickets for that. It can be enforced by our ordinance violation bureau, all good. This one is just more complicated because there's a criminal component, there's a state law, there's federal regulation about vaping. There's the tobacco, a lot of the enforcement tickets and penalties related to tobacco. A portion of that goes into tobacco cessation, prevention type programs, you say, so this one's complicated. But what, fortunately, we've got a couple months till school's back in session. And so what Chief and I talked about is trying to figure out what we can do, get some options, work with the school, because school's gonna have to be a big.
Well, are they gonna, are they gonna hire another officer out of that?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it would be necessary, just really trying to figure out a way to address it so that, you know, in our current concerns. Fortville Metropolitan Police Department making sure that our officers aren't unnecessarily tangled up in something that they shouldn't be, but still doing the. Right by the school and the community and students out there, if you have that SRO program, so. It's a complicated issue because there's so many layers to it, so. We're digging in, we'll see what we can do about it, and we'll keep you updated. Hopefully we'll have something for the next school year in place that'll be. A better option for us.
To me, this is a bad taste for our police. You know, again, they're. So it's kind of like this. Right. It is. We still write parking tickets out there for no student stickers. They have a lot of hats out there as an SRO.
Right.
They enforce some of the school ordinance schools where we had a MOU set up with schools from the ordinances. We enforce the criminal laws. Obviously, we're there for the safety and the security. That's our main reason and our main focus, is to make sure nothing happens in our schools. But they wear a lot of hats. They have to play counselor, they have to play policeman, they have to play school security guard, and they have to play, you know, coach sometimes. So I'm just kind of looking for an option. It, it was brought to me by Ben. I would like to move forward, kind of change, see what we can talk about. See what maybe our options could be, get with Tim Rutherford, see what maybe he might have as an idea. And just kind of progress as we go.
Nice for you to have an attractive incentive not to bring it.
Unfortunately, I got junior team members stickers. Look, you get a sticker for having your bike today. So, other than that. I don't have anything. Then, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, thank you. All right, Alex, you have anything for us?
I don't. Let's see, have any questions?
Any public comment? Town council comments? Can I get a motion to approve and sign vouchers?
All favor? Aye. Oppose? Nice having it. Can you get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
At eight, what?
Fifty eight?
Forty eight.
Eight or eight?
Eight forty eight. I second. Okay, all favor? Aye. Oppose? Nice having it. Thank you.